Do we need four for any of these?
No.
We don't?
No.
Okay. Then why don't we go ahead and continue the public hearing for 75 Warren Avenue. Seventeen-page decision that none of us have seen before, so...
I'm sorry for the delay, but I was involved with a bunch of other things and kept getting interrupted.
How much does it resemble the old one?
It actually... I would not bother with the old one.
Okay.
Because I ended up basically drafting out all the meeting language and then I basically took the decision and kind of grouped it as we do with general site plan decisions for houses. And, but then we have a lot of stuff at the end that conditions. And what I tried to do is tailor it so that it's tailored toward the four uses on the site.
Yes, Susan?
Hi, Mr. Lee.
Hi.
Is there something to read besides the agenda?
Um, there's the agenda, there's the draft decision for Warren Ave., and there's old statements. That's it.
Those last two say something.
Old statements.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Um, yeah. We, yeah, just do this. Right. Okay.
This one now.
Yeah, this is actually going to be continued. The whole traffic area issue is going to be continued.
Make this one by the way.
Yeah.
So that means you're going to write this one.
Yeah, right, yeah. What? Have to do what? We, well, we already discussed the lot there. It's the driveway one that's... We've been, well, um, I've been given a deadline by the town manager of the first of March. So, for final language. Well, it'll be continued in that, there may already be...
It will be delayed, I mean...
Yeah, we'll just do it.
You know, we're not all turned to stone. It's a separate day.
They're reading the 75 Warren Ave.
The conditions.
Yeah. That's okay, that's okay. Okay.
So, I don't need to be rude, but since Betty says you're continuing the dog by the stuff, I'm gonna flee, okay?
I won't take offense, Susan. Okay, you're on the camera.
........................... Um... ......... Yeah, but I think we have standards that were understood. And I think we'll work on some true ones. Yeah, we can agree. Yes, but it seems like we haven't all the same. Well, my comment was we can see that. Sure.
There is some... Yes. Okay, three five. We must have done something. Well, I missed a lot of here.
......... No.
I think the idea... ......... Pathways, walking pathways. Any... Yeah, that's it.
Yes, it's going to be a bit more challenging than not. I don't know, I've got a number of people directing to it. There?
That would throw a very interesting curve.
A similar building to the... ...
It's a pretty tight site as it is. More traffic to it, it's probably definitely. All of the flights were traffic still, traffic hardly.
Okay.
It's difficult time here and it's snows obviously to go through for a long reasons. You have ways to handle or instructions that will control this and things like that. But even the ideal service is going to be... ... But they're in a very quiet site because...
I have to put on my thinking cap again. I think all around would be beautiful because of the store condition because it's so lovely. So it's going to be... ... The rhythm?
That's one of the best looking things that I've ever seen in a song since I had the... I was going to ask if it came from...
Yeah, I love it. Well, this blush thing, that's good. It's pretty cool.
It's an interesting... Get out.
Everybody done? Have you all read it?
Yes.
You have? Do you have any changes or suggestions?
Uh, there's a, there's a few, um, basic edits, yeah.
Do we want to just go through page by page?
Sure.
So we're all going to give our comments per page, so you can start just on the first page.
Okay.
So page one, do we have anything?
Yeah, I, I guess the first thing was we want to, um, uh, take out the, um, building used by BLO for oil delivery, uh, in service. At this point, that no longer applies, that, that part of the business, business... uh, in service, at this point, that no longer applies, that, that part of the business, business, sorry, has been sold.
But when you applied, that was part of your application.
Okay.
And so...
I just wanted to clarify that.
The point is, is, it's clarified further in the process.
Okay.
So, um... I think it should just stay there, it's further than there.
Okay.
So, anything on page one?
Are, are the, um, I know the applicants are correct, is the owner correct?
Kevin Whitmore?
Of...
Obelbees, BL Obelbeensons?
We're, we're just the owners of, of, of Pure Solutions.
Okay, so, there's...
So, they're the applicant, the owner's a pure solution, and the owner is Kevin Whitmore of BL Obelbeensons.
But that, we're just talking about the Pure Solutions building here, so, and unless Kevin is also...
Obelbees is funding that, is, that's gonna be their building.
The Pure Solution, the new building?
Correct. It will be owned by, um, Obelbees.
Okay.
It will be on Obelbees property. So, we're okay leaving it the way it is?
Yep.
Anyone else have anything on the first page?
Minor one, it's, um, the property presently contains a former rail hay storage facility. It's not currently a rail storage facility, it was formerly for hay storage, right?
Right. Yeah.
Right now, it doesn't say formerly, like...
Yeah.
Former...
Former, it was a rail hay storage facility.
Okay. Okay. Can we read the page two?
Mm-hmm. Anyone have anything on page two? Everything looks good on this page. All set.
Three. I'd suggest taking out the plan that's noted in ten, because we actually are using the plan that's in eleven.
Exactly. Yep, I agree.
Did we get anything in writing above me show?
Um...
Nothing? No? Okay.
Also on that page, um, I'm not sure why you say under nine, the plan indicates a five thousand square foot Pure Solutions building, and the actual square footage with the second floor would be seventy-five hundred.
I just wanted to clarify.
The plan?
Because the plan's not accurate.
The number nine plan?
The number nine plan is not accurate.
Oh, okay.
That's, my intent was to try to clarify that that plan was not totally accurate.
Just checking. Anyone have anything else on that page?
No.
No. Page four.
I've got forty zillion grammatical...
Well, I was going to suggest, let's, let's just hand Betsy the grammatical errors and just talk about substantive stuff, 'cause I have a few of those too.
I, I think the, just the biggest one from us on here was just on, uh, make, the May twentieth section.
It's Brian Whitmore.
It's Brian, co-founder of Pure Solutions, present business partner, Trevor Nelson, um, to discuss, et cetera, and then Kevin Whitmore, an engineer, Peter Gamble, were also present.
Okay. So...
It doesn't, I don't...
Keep in mind, I had been here five days.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I know, it's, it's...
And, and you, uh, you probably did more of the talking, so, your name should probably be indicated more than Whitmore, like in the next paragraph, although I don't know that it really matters.
Exactly, however you guys wanna, you know, do it, um, however, yeah.
So, I could say applicant Whitmore. Or, I could say...
What are you talking about, where?
On the last paragraph, to differentiate between Brian and Kevin?
Well...
Is that what you're...
No, I wasn't saying that, although you could, I was just saying like, that probably should be Nelson instead of Whitmore, but...
Nelson would be more, more presentation...
Doesn't matter that.
Than Whitmore did, but...
Okay.
But yeah, you could say applicant Whitmore, when you wanna clarify that.
Okay.
I think that makes, yeah, a lot of sense.
I, I have a, are you moving on from four?
No, no, go ahead.
Cause my, my question on four is, we talked several times in the decision about this zoning board of appeals process, should we, should we attach the CBA decision to this?
The CBA hasn't made a decision.
They, they, they haven't? They haven't determined whether they need variances or special permits or anything?
They haven't made a formal written decision.
Okay.
And they don't keep minutes, so I can't get anything.
Yeah, they're waiting.
For us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've got a idea of where they're going, but they're not gonna make a final decision until...
They have a draft, which I don't feel comfortable adding to this.
Okay, but couldn't be attaching once they've made their decision?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, maybe we should include that with, they'd open in the list of documents?
Okay.
Can you do that, 'cause we're gonna be approving and...
You're gonna be approving it before they do, so...
Subsequent, uh, decision.
Right, so...
I don't think we can do that.
Well, why not?
We can add it later.
Yeah.
You can add something in the future.
You're, you're adding something that's not prepared yet, but will be.
Yeah, I don't see why you couldn't do that. You know, to be appended later.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To be appended later, that's fine.
Just to keep the record straight.
Okay.
You know? Cause we talk about it two or three times.
No, I get it. Okay, so page four has some grammatical issues.
We'll just hand it to you.
We'll just hand it to you after we're all worked up.
Okay, five.
This looked pretty good on our end, um, just to clarify, our current office location is five eighty-two. Boston Post Road.
And I had a question there, uh, on that first paragraph, the top paragraph, there was, there were some times you said there were four office personnel, and other times you said five.
Yes, so, we have one office personnel who's like a swing player.
Okay.
So, he represents an office personnel number and a field specialist number, depending on what kind of year it is.
On what day it is.
Yeah, what time of year.
Yeah, so, so right now, he's in the office, but in the working season, he's in the field, providing the service to our clients.
That's why I was...
Yeah.
So, should that number in that first paragraph be four or five, or four and a half?
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
You could say four point five.
You could say four and a half, yeah, that's more accurate, I think.
Four full-size people in the door.
Do you have anything else on that page?
I, I, there, the only other thing on that page, um, was the lumen counts, and I had made original edits on those, and I just don't have, actually, I might have that number.
Well, I don't even understand that sentence, at present, it's forty-eight thousand, with the new lighting proposed to be a reduction.
What they did was, they originally made a proposal that had almost fifty thousand.
On just that one building?
On just that one building.
No, it was fifty thousand on the entire site.
Oh, okay.
And, um, we reduced it down, the, the numbers, um, I don't have them, I put them on that first edit sheet that I've given you, Betsy.
Okay.
Um, so if you have that, or I can, I can send them, it's only off by a couple hundred on the total count, and then the reduction count.
Okay.
But so then what we...
So, I'll check those numbers.
Yeah, so, yeah, um, again, it's, it's minor, I just for accuracy had made that move.
But then, to clarify, that means that you're changing the lighting on some of the existing buildings?
We're taking lighting down, yeah, so there was lighting that is on the site that we're no longer gonna be using, um, and in the proposed, um, new building, we were somewhere around twenty-five thousand lumens, and, um, we've, we submitted, um, roughly to twenty thousand and change, so we reduced by about five thousand lumens, um...
But that's on your building?
That was just on the Pure Solution building.
And that was on the new proposed building.
Weren't you also making some changes on existing buildings?
We were just removing lights that's...
Well, so that's probably worth mentioning.
Is that mentioned, the bigger...
No, that's on, that's on the new building.
No, it's mentioned further, um...
The bigger spotlights would be replaced with dark sky.
No, that's for the new building.
That's for the new building.
Oh.
No, that was for the existing building.
That's what I thought, yeah.
It was noted that the bigger spotlights on the building would be replaced with dark sky compliant fixtures.
But you just said they'd be removed.
No, 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 the bigger spotlights for the building would be placed dark sky compliant, the bigger spotlights were what you originally proposed on the Pure Solution building.
On the new building.
On your new building, right.
Exactly, yep.
So...
So, I think we need another sentence that said that, um, X number of spotlights on...
Yeah, so we reduced the number of spotlights by two.
On the, on the Pure Solution building.
On the new building.
Okay, but didn't, oh, okay, so you're not removing any of the spotlights on the other buildings, on the existing buildings?
We, there are, there are lights, existing lights on the existing buildings that are no longer being used, correct.
Have they taken down, or are they not being used?
They will be, yeah, they will be removed, they're not in working order.
And is that part of the...
It's just a skeleton.
Is that part of the reduction?
This is news, we'll let it.
Okay, but is that part of the reduction you're talking about?
That's part of the reduction that we're talking about, correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like, for example, where we're currently operating, uh, there is a light fixture that we haven't used, um, you know, for quite some time now, so we're including that in that reduction.
Can we quantify it, like how many existing fixtures are being removed?
It's, it's on the plan we submitted.
Okay.
Yep, in detail.
Okay.
Um, on John Hammel's plan.
But that's for the existing building? I mean, the proposed building?
Yes, it's all in that.
Okay, but of the, the existing structures, I don't recall any...
We show what's being removed in, on the site plans that were submitted.
I remember one that was being taken off the storage building.
Yeah, when you had pressure sodium.
Yeah, we had them, yeah, we had them outlined on that plan.
So, I'm gonna have to do a little modification of that paragraph.
Anything else on that page? I have one question, um, when we say a rainwater collection system consisting of twenty-one hundred gallon tanks?
Yes.
How many?
Three.
Let's say three then.
And are each of them twenty-one hundred gallons?
Correct, yeah.
And it's correct that you use that rainwater to, and mix it with...
Correct, yeah, that's how we, uh, run our operations, you know, with any, Westin Town Hall.
Great. Page six.
Alan Worth, is it A-L-A-N?
His, his last name is Worth.
Worth, this is Alan Worth, it is A-L-A-N. I was trying to, I was trying to picture it, so, I didn't know Alan Worth.
So, in the second paragraph, ABLA had basic zoning concerns relative to lack of frontage on the property, not on a roadway, right?
Yeah, on the property.
Yeah, on the property.
Well, it's redundant, that's what frontage is.
We could just say lack of frontage across...
Right.
Okay.
Out on the roadway. Anyone have anything else on that page?
Well, again...
Not as substantive.
Yeah, well... Well, I'm sorry, I've got lots of notes that are easy to read.
Seven.
All goes, if no one else is saying anything, um, on the, on the second to the last paragraph, item four, expansion of a non-conforming lot, isn't it really expansion of structures of a non-conforming lot, or...
It's use and structures.
Use too?
Yeah.
Isn't it, isn't there already an industrial use, or...
Right, but you're...
Or is it the opposite part?
So, that use is allowed, but...
It's increasingly intensive use.
Right.
Okay, so expansion of structures and use. Anything else?
Yeah, the, the only thing I, I have here, I might as well mention is, is a, it's just a general note, that when we're getting into all the hearing headers, they, I think they should all have the same format.
Okay.
You know, they're, they're all different formats. Uh, Pure Solutions at Obelbees, Obelbees Expansion, Obelbees Pure Solution.
If they say... Anyone have anything?
Besides, I didn't have anything that was, yeah.
Yeah, mostly the grammatic.
Yeah, I do, page nine. I assume in the third paragraph, you mean to say residential dewbuck has three vehicles?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
And then in the fifth paragraph, says the newly proposed building would have six-to-eight vehicles inside, could park vehicles outside the building and beside the building, which is the same thing, so I just crossed out...
So, outside the bill, the building in front and beside.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I made the same note, just leaving, um, the back of buildings available.
And then in the second to the last paragraph, third line says the activity would be busy, which they are moving vehicles, I changed it to when they are moving vehicles, the site would be busy and crowded.
Yeah, I had a slightly different, uh, my, my suggestion was, uh, the, the...
We are getting the grammar wrong.
Yeah, I guess that's...
But it just didn't, uh, make it more comprehensive, I suppose, but...
I, I said Oppenheimer stated that during the transition periods in which they are moving vehicles, the activity would be very busy.
Yep.
Just took one of the promises out of that edge.
I think Steve's quote was busy is, um, somewhat nebulous, I mean, I, it was, the issue was, it was the time at which the most traffic congestion would occur.
Also, I don't think activity is busy, it was like...
No, you're right. Well, no, you can have, you can have different levels of activity.
Right. Well... Yeah, okay, let's, all right, but if, if you wanna have a more specific description, Roy?
Yep.
That's fine, you're gonna have your copy too.
Yeah, or, I mean, have three copies, is that gonna be more confusing?
Okay, then what do you wanna say?
Send something, um, it doesn't matter to me, busy is, is, I think it's understood.
Freddic?
Well, I just said, try, uh, Oppenheimer stated, you said, uh, that, that the transition period during which they are mov, uh, moving vehicles, the act, the potential for traffic congestion would be raised, is the way I would... The potential for traffic congestion.
Would be decreased.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the very last line, yeah, on that page, that the newly proposed barn, it's the newly proposed building.
Yeah.
Could, yeah, house, has new added vehicles. Anyone else have anything on that page? Page ten. Who was William Rowe, never heard of him, and all of a sudden he's...
Uh, Billy Rowe. Uh, Billy Rowe. He has actually been.
He runs, he keeps a couple of dumpsters on the site. The company is.
Is he Weston Container?
Corporation.
He's a co-owner.
Well, I think we need, like, that's the first time you see his name and it just seems out of the blue to me.
Owner of Weston Container.
Yeah.
Yeah, owner of Weston.
Co-owner.
Co-owner.
With.
With Weston Landscaping?
Correct.
That's what it says, isn't it?
Yes.
Phil Rowe Landscaping, joint forces.
Yep.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And Phil Rowe is a, is a lifelong resident, he lives, he grew up down by Ogvis.
He lives on the corner of Boston Post Road.
Right, yeah, yeah. And his business is an excavating company that's down beside Ogvis, so, you know, neighbors and some kids.
Okay, in the second full paragraph, bottom of the paragraph, this is the one that's, because Michaud stated that history, it says, ABLA stated that the ZBA overruled a building inspector on the determination of parking. Actually, what I said was that I understood that they had done that, but I.
Okay.
You know, I didn't, I'm not stating it as a fact.
Okay.
They did though, didn't they?
I know, I, I, that's what I understand.
Yep.
So, a little bit above that, it says she stated per the bylaw that the planning board could reduce the parking requirements by twenty percent.
She was named. So I should say where?
Okay, of, of the newly triggered amount or the whole on the lot.
Right.
Yeah, that needs a little sprucing.
Couple small.
Yeah, I mean, do you want to get into those?
No.
We've got a hundred of them.
Okay. But then, on the next to last paragraph, starting with February fourth.
Right.
So it says, a parking plan indicated sixty-nine parking spaces presently on the site with eighty-four proposed, so that's an increase of fifteen. So, so that means that the number of parking spaces was reduced from thirty-three of fifteen of additional parking spaces. I just feel like it doesn't really address the parking reduction. It talks about going from sixty-nine to eighty-four, or before, we were talking about some other number, I think. But I just feel like it doesn't really explain any kind of resolution.
You're right, it doesn't. And part of the problem is, is that my understanding is that the ZBA has, in part of their discussion on this, has, has indicated that they don't need eighty-four parking spaces. So I don't know how quite to reconcile it. I mean, the easy solution would be for having, to have the planning board state that they, per the bylaw, that if the baseline is sixty-nine and they're required to have thirty-three, that's a total of a hundred and two, and if they grant, if this board granted a twenty percent parking reduction, that would decrease it by twenty, requiring eighty-two spaces and they're providing eighty-four spaces.
Well, who's, who's gonna make the decision on parking?
Well, the building inspector made a determination on parking and then.
Yeah, which I understood was overruled by, by the zoning board of appeals, but they haven't actually made a ruling.
Right, so it seems to me we could, we could put in the conditions that if necessary, if the applicant didn't receive the necessary zoning relief from the ZBA, they could come back to the planning board for a twenty percent reduction. I don't know how to handle it.
I hope that we control.
Well, you do, based on, that would be the easy solution.
I thought that was only in the case of, huh?
Go ahead.
I thought that was only in the case of Dover amendment.
No, no, no. The parking bylaw gives this board the ability to grant up to a twenty percent reduction.
Well, you're, this is different than the one that was recently passed, it has to do with limited, with the Dover amendment.
It's got nothing to do with the Dover amendment.
Okay, so that's, you're talking about a different bylaw.
I'm talking to the zoning bylaw.
Well, is that a special permit?
No, no. The, the zoning bylaw, the section that deals with parking, basically states that, um. Parking, blue parking, access, special office. This is an old one. Wait, here we go. In use in business district that requires site plan approval, with respect to any use in a business district, office and research and development districts or in a commercial district which requires site plan approval, the planning board may, as part of the site plan approval, allow a reduction of the number of parking spaces of the rights required in this section by up to twenty percent when it determines that the reduction is reasonable in the circumstances and would not deteriorate from the intent of the bylaw. So.
So, is the, is it twenty percent of thirty-three, or?
I think, to be conservative, I would say it's twenty percent of the total. And they have a baseline of, of sixty-nine, and they, by the, by the building inspector's determination, were required to add another thirty-three. That adds up to a hundred and two.
Okay, well, first of all, on page nine, it says existing sixty-seven, and on page ten, it says sixty-nine.
Okay.
So, you know which one it is?
I think it's sixty-nine.
It's sixty-nine.
Okay.
Yep.
So it's thirty.
We went back and we were by, we had our engineer double check all the numbers, because you had requested a more accurate plan, and he came up with sixty-nine as being the baseline.
Why does it say sixty-seven in the first paragraph? I'm gonna see it.
So that's where you got the reduction of twenty?
Twenty percent, so.
Or, or twenty spaces. But who did, did?
Well, that's, that's actually contradicting the sentence, isn't it? Up in this, where it says, where stated that the board could reduce the parking requirements by twenty percent of the newly triggered amount.
Or the whole amount.
Or, or, or the whole on the lot.
See, I'm not, I'm not totally sure what it is, but I would, I would make the assumption that it's the whole amount.
Well, we need to be sure. I don't know if it means, it's a contact of Joel or.
Yeah, it's giving a call to Joel. Well, but then we need to put that in the conditions if we're gonna.
Right.
Vote on it, on our reduction.
But the other thing is, how do we know, so does the proposed plan now show eighty-four spaces?
The proposed plan shows the ability for eighty-four spaces, even though we're not using all the spaces.
Okay, and did Bob Michaud feel that eighty-four was?
He said they'd have to make it work somehow.
Yeah.
I think, I remember him saying that all companies have a vested interest in making this work. They've been making it work for ninety years to some extent, and they're gonna continue to do that. I remember that kind of being.
Yep, second sentence, Michaud stated that history shows the site operations work.
Right.
They're not pretty.
They're not pretty.
Maybe everyone needs to drive the smart car.
Hey, well, we started the trend, so.
In part two, sideways.
I know, right?
Right.
I think based on the way this bylaws were in, I would take the, the stance that it's the entire amount.
The aggregate.
The aggregate.
Yeah, but.
I can double check.
We need to double check, uh, because we've never actually done this before, so.
Yeah.
Um, we need to be sure. And that's gonna be another condition. Are we ready to make other comments?
I, I just had one other comment for page ten. The, our, our product is not a dry mixture, it's a wet mixture.
Where is that?
It is in the final complete paragraph.
Oh, dry mixture.
Nelson indicated the pure solution, dry mixture, had a low flashpoint, it's, it's low flashpoint, but it's a wet.
Sure.
Okay.
My, my comment is in the paragraph above that, where, because where noted that there appear to be four outstanding issues, fire department concerns, et cetera. Nowhere in the discussion, at the, I, at least, maybe I missed it, but I didn't notice that anywhere in the discussion that we talked about fire department concerns or septic approvals. So, these just jump out whole cloth. I know that in, I know that we talked about them during the meeting, which is why they came up in your summary, but they're, they're not in the discussion, so. I know we talked about septic design several times, and whether the board helped it sign off, and whether it was large enough for retaining walls, and there were a whole series of questions about that. That's nowhere in the discussion.
So I can add that to the discussion.
And we also talked about whether the fire department would be comfortable with the clearances and the access around the backs of the buildings and.
That's addressed in the conditions, isn't it?
It is, but it's not in the discussion, so it just jumps out. We've got concerns, but we, but anyone reading us wouldn't know it, well. And then we've got two dates that don't have any discussion. February eighteenth and this.
We didn't have any discussion on February eighteenth, other to, other than to continuing.
Okay. And then you're gonna add that, you're gonna add tonight's.
So are we on page eleven now?
Yeah.
So, I like the fact that you included the standards and criteria, because, but I just, I want to ask a question, why, because you don't, it's not usually done unless we're gonna start doing it now.
Um.
Maybe we could add that as an add-on.
I can do that, but I think that.
Or maybe the question is, why did you add the standards and criteria?
I added them because I think that, for me, writing the decision, it was helpful to know what the standards and criteria were, and what this board needs to make determinations on.
Yeah, no, I mean, I don't have a problem that it just raised the question, why don't we always do it, or why are we.
I don't know.
Getting it here, so.
I mean, I, I think what, on the two fifty-five Miriam decision, I, I did talk with legal counsel before that got filed, and one of the things that he recommended, and I had done it before, but, and it was not the protocol of prior decisions, was to put the criteria and the findings in there.
So should, should we do this as a?
Well, we attach the parking, the, on the, the parking regulations as an attachment to typical decisions, it doesn't apply here, but typical residential conditions, there's a, there's an attachment at the end.
Oh, the attachment at the, at the end deals with work hours.
Work hours.
Yeah, and we would put that at the end.
Another attachment at the end.
And, and if so, maybe we start doing it very.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yep.
So is that a boilerplate piece then, that just sort of contradicts it overall, although about what you're asking, and you put it in once, it should just always be there? It is like the same thing every time?
Yep.
Yeah.
It's right from the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, it is. I wasn't sure if it changed, you know, if it was customized.
No, 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 definitely not.
So it's like a disclaimer at the end?
Yeah.
Yeah, rather than sticking it in the body of every single decision.
So I can. I think, from my perspective, and I think probably from legal counsel's perspective, it's probably better to have it in the decision.
Really?
Okay.
That's fine.
I can see why the special permit, that would be the case, because you're basing the special permit decision on the criteria, but.
The paragraphs start by saying the development shall be integrated. Is that just boilerplates? They don't cover our situation, the development.
Right, that's just boilerplate, yeah. I mean, you could keep that first paragraph in.
This is right out of the, it's an excerpt right out of the zoning bylaw.
Correct.
That's what we're talking about. Why reprint over and over and over and over again something that.
Well, I could just reference the criteria, I could reference it.
You could, yeah, and then if, if we wanted to be, if we thought it would be helpful for people to be able to read it without having to go out and get a zoning bylaw, could attend the language in the back of it.
I mean, you could keep this first paragraph, and then the last has to be the standards and criteria are as follows, or are in the section, section of the bylaw. Anything else on that page?
No.
No.
No. Page twelve.
This is all boilerplate.
Right. Page thirteen.
It's all boilerplate.
Page fourteen.
Boilerplate.
I have a couple of things. I, I don't see anywhere where it says like you normally do that all construction vehicles shall be parked within the site.
Um.
Where is it? I saw it somewhere. Oh, you did?
It's here.
I probably missed it. Oh, I see it, I'm sorry. It's on, it's two on page thirteen, sorry about that. And then, Betsy, at the bottom of page fourteen, it's just missing, you know, the word shall be installed.
Right, right, right.
Page fifteen. So, in the third paragraph, the third line where it says, in order to screen the mass of the house, I assume we mean the mass of the building.
Building, yeah.
And then, shouldn't G and H be reversed, since H is still talking about lighting? G is talking about irrigation, sure. Just the order.
Okay. Um, I was also gonna add in F, that language had said all. Um, I was also gonna, um, add in F that, uh, language had said all new lighting fixtures shall be dark supply compliant, and then all existing lightings, but fixtures shall be replaced with dark supply compliant fixtures.
No, I don't think so.
No. I don't think we ever discussed that. It was only for the new building.
Okay. So what are you doing with the old lighting?
The old lighting is all on timers, and it's going to be, other than ones that were kind of essentially decommissioned, it's gonna stay the same.
So all lighting fixtures on the new structure?
Are, um, dark sky compliant, yeah, and then we also, um, are putting all of them on motion sensors, so they're not gonna be on.
Okay, somewhere else in there, it said that they would be on all night.
Yeah, yeah.
Did it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's not right.
And that was not.
In one of our meetings, the request was for them to be on sensors, and we said that's fine.
Oh, well.
And we have to change that.
Somewhere in the discussion it says it's gonna be on all night.
Nope.
So we need to track that.
That was part of the conversation.
That was part of the conversation.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, I think as long as we say in F that they will.
All on timers.
Yeah.
All on timers, okay.
And we think that's a good idea.
I'm still all over the place on lumens. I mean, in the discussion, the lumens were at forty-one thousand after reduction.
That's for the whole site.
Right, that's for the whole site.
So the building itself is twenty thousand.
Correct.
Yeah, so, um, after our meeting, um, last Wednesday, we were still over, um, about three, thirty-two hundred, uh, lumens, so we were somewhere around, um, twenty-five thousand. We were able to reduce that by five thousand.
Yeah, we figured out to move to like.
So that, um, yeah, the max was twenty-two and we, on your part, and we got to twenty thousand roughly, so we were able to reduce it more, which is great.
Great. Page sixteen.
Yeah, um, with other conditions, I think, I think conditions one, two, and three. Well, we might wanna think about the bus thing. But certainly that the memorandum of understanding between the, between ogrebees in the town, plus conditions one and three ought to be before there's a building permit, not before there's a C O O. By the time this is, the board has left.
Well, they're not gonna install their septic system.
But they need a design.
Right. And their design has been approved by the board of health.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, they have to have an operational septic system before they can get on.
This was structures to be served, the applicant shall submit a complete design prepared and stamped.
Okay.
Right, you want that before the C O O?
Okay, so let's, okay, so, no, 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 let's say.
So that should be moved to A.
Then we shall be served by adequate water and sewage disposal. For structures to be served by sewage disposal system, the applicant shall submit a complete design standard, um, contain all information for our.
Yeah, why not just move it to A?
Pardon?
Why not just move it to A, conditions will be satisfied prior to your service ability permit?
The design part certainly.
Well, why don't we just say that he has to have an operational septic system? And then the board of, see, it's only the new building that's gonna have a septic system, so.
I thought they were do, redoing the whole septic system, because.
There's no septic system on the site.
Yeah, sorry.
Finish the sentence, because right now there's no septic system.
The septic system is only gonna apply to this new building.
Yeah.
So, the board of health has asked for porta potties for the buildings that are not served by septic.
Right, so currently on site, um, there is one porta potty, and that is paid for by Weston Landscape.
See, does that sound exactly clear at this point?
In Wendy, um, one of her, uh, recommendations for, um, this site, over and above the approval of the septic plan, was that she thought one porta potty was one, um, shy, yeah, not adequate to sustain Weston Landscape's business.
Well, in this language, it says for structures, plural, to be served by sewage disposal systems, plural, the applicant shall submit the design, and then at the end of it.
I'll revise this so that the first part will just say that they have to have an operational septic system.
For.
For their new structure.
For the new structure.
And they have to have two porta potties on site for the rest.
Did the board help give you a?
I had a memo on that.
We ought to attach that too.
Okay.
Because we're approving.
Memo for memo, yeah, I'm sorry.
For.
For the porta potties.
We don't say okay to porta potties.
That was her recommendation.
I know, that's why I wanna have a memo attached.
All attached.
Okay.
But every project that we review has a septic system, so why, why wouldn't there be some standard language about?
This one's different because some of the buildings aren't gonna have a septic system.
Right, but we're not really talking about those buildings.
Well, we're talking about the septic system, so that we're, this is site plan approval, and we're, we're approving a, a, a septic design for which porta potties is an acceptable.
Right, I guess what I was thinking is that item one is really about the porta potties, and the, everything that precedes that in item one is talking about the septic system. It seemed like that would be standard wording that should be satisfied prior to the building.
Oh, I thi, I think it should, I think it should be, I mean.
Well, I'm suggesting taking out that first sentence, the first two sentences, and changing it to saying there'll be an operational septic system for this new building prior to occupancy.
What about an adequate water supply?
And an adequate water supply.
No, it's all right, that term's all right.
Water service.
But I'd still like to have that memo attached.
I will, I will attach it. I have a note saying attach it.
Do we need Sue for anything else, or for any, I should say, she's asking?
I don't think so. I mean, is she actually on the line?
No, we were gonna call her back when we.
No, I don't, I don't think so. So, conditions two and three though, at least with respect to the memorandum of understanding, and certainly the fire department requirement should all be before the, the permit.
Okay.
We need to, you know, picking up on what we said before, we need to add some kind of language about the, um, granting the, the relief of the parking requirement.
So that should be after five.
Yeah.
And item three should also be moved to before the building permit, right?
Right, right.
Should item six be moved to before the, the building permit?
Well, shouldn't it really be combined with two?
Two, yeah.
The, the problem I have with that is that this is, the, the turnaround is gonna be something that's gonna be worked on for the next couple of years, or for the next year at least.
It is?
I assume so. I assume that there'll be continued discussion, so they should.
Oh, you're talking about the off-site turnaround?
I'm talking about the off-site turnaround.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, well, then you need to make that clear.
Yeah, that's not clear.
So it's different from the one and two?
Right. Should say.
It, it should say the side property line as well.
So that's like the permanent turnaround?
Yeah.
Certainly, condition seven, wouldn't that also be before the building permit? The Z B A's decisions?
Think the date, is the date wrong on that as well, number seven?
No, that was the date the building inspector made a determination.
And that should be two thousand fourteen, right?
It's a future date?
No, okay.
So which other one should be before the building permit, when you say, I know seven and this one to do? You're saying?
Uh, that one we need to, to actually know. Well, yeah, well, the, we, there's another condition here which would be before the building permit, which is our vote, or maybe it's, I don't know where it goes, it's, it's, um, but it's our vote on
Right.
granting the twenty percent, uh, reduction in the parking requirement. So.
Well, my concern, should the board do that, is that if the Z B A grants further reduction, then they.
Well, how can they? Do they have the ability to grant?
I, I don't, I don't know. Um, there's, there was some discussion apparently about, um, the, the lack of understanding of the, the baseline number of units of parking spaces, so I, I don't, I don't know.
Well, that's their business. We, I think we have to make our decision independent of what they may or may not do, and then they can do what they want. Let's face it, if we, if, if, if Joe Barr says that the twenty percent reduction is for the, the total number of cars, new and existing, and the number of cars provided is eighty-four, and the reduction gets us to eighty-two.
No, it's a hundred, a hundred and two.
The number provided is eighty-four, a hundred and two with a twenty percent reduction gets us down to eighty-two.
Right, right, right.
We're, then, then that essentially ratifies the parking scheme.
Right, right.
And, and if the Z B A wants to allow them to have even fewer, that's up to the Z B A.
Right.
So assuming that, that, that those, that math is, is, is in operation, the question is, where does that get put in this decision? It would be gen, it would be general conditions, right?
Yeah.
It would be actually a paragraph A, and then the condition satisfied prior, prior to the building permit would be paragraph B, et cetera. Or actually. Or would it be somewhere else?
I would put it in it, um.
At least there were paragraphs in here that talks about our decision.
Pretty much at the end.
So would there be two paragraphs there, record or vote? The first paragraph would say, you know, the board voted to grant a, a twenty percent reduction in the parking, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
And then the, the next paragraph would begin constituting majority of the board, blah, blah, blah? Somehow, or would it be constituting majority and then paragraph one, paragraph two?
Um, I think what I would do is say constituting majority of the planning board, uh, the following members voted to approve the applicant's application as follows, and then grant the zoning relief is one, and then the site plan review is two, or something like that.
Grant zoning relief? What do you mean?
Or. The, the parking.
Okay.
Parking relief.
So what is site plan approval, whether it's?
I would do the first, and then the site plan review second.
Okay, and then the last one would be, um, picking up on Sue Zach's comment back in the discussion. Uh, if there's a, if there's a change in.
Tenant.
In tenant or use of the property.
Yeah, yeah.
Then they have to come back and.
Yeah, and, and in fact, wait a minute, um, on page.
And where was that?
Seventeen, um, paragraph, that A paragraph, um, I had.
Any deviation or change in project included, but not limited to?
To tenant design, tenant use, design and or location of the structure, accessory structures, driveway.
Does it say that already?
No, it does not say tenant or use.
Right, so we should add that.
So where, oh, any other?
So be tenant and use before design.
Yeah. Is that specific to this here building, or is that the whole lot?
The, the representations made were for the whole lot that you had ogrebees for truck storage now, Pure Solutions, um, Weston Container, and Weston Landscape. And so if Weston Landscaping disappears.
Yeah.
You then have to come back here.
To do what?
To adjust the special permit, this, the site plan approval, and talk about the new tenant this week.
I just can't assign a tenant and get it from this space.
Pardon?
I just can't assign a tenant and get it from this space?
I don't think so.
No, because it changes the part. It might change the number of people, the number of cars.
What makes that different from any other tenant or landlord scenario?
It doesn't. I mean, if, if you're changing, I mean, we, we're, we had the same thing out of Mass Broken Stone, where the ten, the tenants changed, and so we had a, a re-review of the site, of the site plan approval.
I mean, you've made certain representations that the parking's gonna work because you had.
This is, so after we build the building, everything's been approved, we get all, we sign off on everything, certificate of occupancy, we're good to go. If Weston Landscape then leaves, we have all the right to bring a new tenant in without your approval, correct?
No, because you, the.
Why not?
Because the ten's a different tenant, with.
But you.
Possibly a different occupancy, different parking and vehicular impacts perhaps?
I mean, you've made the representation, this whole thing is gonna work because of who's there.
Well, exactly.
But if they leave, and now I wanna put two single trucks down there, or.
Well, then, then it'll be approved, oh, but at least we, at least we know.
Right, but I might have, again, if all these spaces become available, there's a lot of people that maybe wanna put, you know, a camping trailer or a boat or something like that down there just for storage. Do I have to come down to see you every time I get a tenant that comes down?
I think that would be a de minimis change, but I, I guess it's sort of up to you to decide whether or not you should come forward.
Yeah, it could be an administrative approval if it's a camper, you know, that could be a, a decision that Bessie makes, but if it's a new tenant with fifteen trucks.
Right.
We'd wanna take a look, see what the impacts are gonna be.
So can there be something written in the decision that says, um, if equal to or less, lesser in, in describing the use, so if we find a tenant that's equal to Weston Landscape or equal to
The use of the system and stuff on the.
or has a lesser impact, right?
Again, if you can demonstrate that the impacts are equal or less.
Why, I'm just saying, just for the purposes of time, right, your time, ogrebees' time.
Well, but I guess one of my concerns is that, I mean, the fire department didn't even know that Pure Solutions was working down there.
And why don't they know that? Don't they patrol the town?
Don't they patrol the town and know what's going on in the neighborhood?
No, no, but they didn't, but they didn't know.
All the firefighters were patrolled, they were, it was by a oil driver, he was down at that yard.
I, I don't know how to explain it, other than, I was told by the fire department when the MSDA sheets came in, that they didn't even know that you were down there and they didn't know how to put down, put out a fire should anything happen down there.
Right, I guess what I.
So part of it is, is the security thing, part of it is public safety thing.
And we're not saying that we're changing. We're just trying to figure out, is there a way to write it up where, as long as we're.
The way it's written right now is that de minimis changes, um, can go through me or go through the town planner.
What's the current protocol for if, before this process were to take place and new tenant were to come on to the property? Is it the same, I mean, are we supposed to let the town aware?
If it were subject to site plan review, that's the difference.
Yeah, you've put a new building on the site and it's going through site plan review.
So then that puts, that puts that site under review potential from now until.
No.
Congratulations. If there's a large, if there's a large change, I mean, that's the thing. If it's a small change, then Betsy can, can make it into a script rule. If it's, if it's a larger change, then we just want at least a consideration so we understand what the, what the change is.
Is, is it an analogy or maybe you can explain when, um, Dumbland Daughter went into that building and there wasn't a restaurant that would afford it?
There was a different restaurant.
Dummy Daughter had to come before us because?
It was a change, a tenant change, but the impacts were exactly the same.
But why in that case would it, did a tenant change have to come before us?
Because the building inspector said so.
I guess we're just trying to clarify more than anything else, because it's a huge change to, you know, the current setup. Just making sure we're well aware of that.
Right, so tenants that will, in the past, past hundred years, have both come and gone without any, my time authorization.
Yeah, a number of things got triggered by this that we've been wrestling with to try to get you guys approved. The first, the, the least of which is that you're accessing your property over residential land, which is a cardinal sin in the zoning regulations. You can't, you're not supposed to be able to do that ever.
Wasn't back, it wasn't back then, I guess.
No, well, this is the point, that, you know, things that happened a hundred years ago, I, I don't say that.
We just want to make sure that we're playing by the rules moving forward and that we have a really well outlined plan and we know exactly what we need to do. And, you know, we don't want this project to put Ogilvies in a position where they can utilize their site to its full capacity within, you know, given, um, parameters. So that's all we're trying to clarify on that.
All right.
I don't know, I mean, do we let them post some language that?
Um.
I mean, not right now.
You're never going to find every possible conceivable combination of things. It's going to have to be up to the, to talking to Betsy on an informal basis and then if Betsy has a question, she can come to us and ask us. But you'll never be able to, to write that definition, it'll be twice as thick as this decision. So I just, I just leave it open, it's easier. Ninety-nine, well, 9% of the time it's going to be, looks good to me and that's the end of it.
So I, a quick thought, um, I remember you said internally it'd be hard to get more than 15 trucks if you were incredibly successful and within five years, let's say, there'd be 15 trucks on site. My question is, should we condition it so that there is no more, there are more than 15 trucks that it comes before us?
It's a Pure Solutions.
Right.
Isn't that kind of going with the parking situation?
Um, I suppose, um, it's just, I, I think it's a tight enough site as it is. We're hoping you guys are incredibly successful. But it seems like, I think we ought to set a ceiling at where it really is.
Kind of like the Turmond Square.
Right.
So would the 82 be the ceiling?
I'm not sure.
Would it be a site number or would it be?
I'm just thinking of it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, if you guys find you need more than 15 vehicles, then you've got to come back to us. It's just, that's.
I mean, we don't think, we, we, in our, you know, best projections, don't believe that we're going to see that number at that, at that site.
I mean, we've had this discussed so many times, I can interrupt you, but in every time you said, we can't, it's impossible for us to imagine we could have more than 15 vehicles. Was that not the case?
I mean, more or less, yes, but isn't the point the, the parking on the overall site and not just specifically Pure Solutions, the interruption of cars?
Well, if you, if, if the total of the site is no more than 84, then you're, you're going to be fine. If the total of the site exceeds 84.
Right.
Then that's a problem.
Right, so I think we should stick with that, right?
I mean, I was just thinking of tentative use and once past 15, that might start, you know, causing other problems. But yeah, I mean, it could be just the, the total number of parking spaces.
Is that how we got the 84?
Some kind of language that they can't spill out onto the street?
Yeah, I mean, we're just.
Well, they have to park on site.
Right.
But I mean, this is on-site parking, that's the sort of definition of on-site parking.
No way under scan that, but what happens if they end up in a tight situation and start parking on the street?
Then there's a, they're in violation.
We won't be doing that. That's not going to, we don't, just based on how we run our own business, that's unacceptable.
Believe me, we would hear all this instantaneously. So yeah, it's up, what do you think? Limit it to 84 total?
Which is what it is.
Which is what it is.
Um, well, I think since the 84 is based on the 15 trucks, then there's no reason to say if you have more than 15 trucks that you would be able to operate. Although I guess you could make the argument that if a business, if some of the other businesses change and therefore they have fewer vehicles, then you could have 17 trucks and still not exceed 84.
Correct, that would do any harm to the.
Right, no, I agree, but the question is, do we want them to come to us if they exceed 15 trucks even though it would still fit within the 84?
Um, no, I don't. This is zero sum game, so as long as it's, um, parking.
Yeah, that's fair enough, yeah.
Well, we care about the number of cars on the site.
Okay.
Yeah, have peace.
Then I think that, I'm just going to add a note that when you talk about the 84 post spaces, even though it might be obvious that it's based on the 15 trucks, because it's like 10,000 pages past the page where you talked about the 15 trucks.
Okay, agree.
So.
Are you, that sort of, is all even switching or?
I don't know.
So the one question I have is that since we are not exactly sure of this 20% zoning relief, I think it's for the whole amount.
Well, let's assume it is and then if you hear differently from Joel, have to make that change. That's, that, then, if Joel Barr says, no, it's only for the 33.
Right.
Then, then it's a problem.
Right, and then the ZBA is going to have to deal.
Yeah. You guys, did you guys understand that?
Yes.
We read it, it's a follow-up.
Go ahead, Steve.
I move that we approve the certificate of action for 75 Warren Avenue with the changes noted.
Second.
Full favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Are you sure you didn't force the container?
We're going to miss you guys. Steve, we're going to really miss you too.
Thank you.
Thanks to your patience, especially last time when you had to sit through two hours of.
The outcome is positive, so we're happy. Thank you.
This only went on since March.
Isn't it March now, oh no. It was submitted in last March.
Yeah, it started, yeah, April 2013, or not April, September 2013.
First sidewalk.
Yeah, that's right.
It was cold that day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks again.
First, um, the, the hearing on.
Actually, one, one final question.
Lots of clearance and driveways.
What are the next steps?
Zoning Board of Appeals.
And after that, um, with registry, in regards to like registry of deeds and those types of things.
This has to be recorded, so what happens is I finish writing this up.
With all the edits?
With all the edits, it gets recorded, it gets submitted to the town clerk and then you get to record it at the registry.
Okay.
And then in the meantime, the ZBA is going to take this decision and they're going to go through what zoning relief means based on this decision.
And that's the special permit piece?
And that's the special permit piece. And then that goes through, that goes to the town clerk who goes through a 20-day appeal process and if nobody's appealed it, then you take that to the registry.
Okay, all right.
And of course, you still need to get a building permit.
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
When are you going to start construction?
Um, as soon as we get all these pieces done, we're meeting with our builder middle of March to kind of start the next steps. But I just want to make sure that we're expediting as much as we can. I think we're, we're still probably about a year away from having.
You mean from moving in?
Yeah, yeah. Just because, you know, the, the two main businesses are seasonal business for the most part, Weston and ourselves, and we want to be respectful of them and have their operations and our operations, spring, summer and fall. So we're going to kind of have to figure that out.
Sure.
Yeah, great, thanks again, really appreciate it, all right.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye.